Test.
Whoop.
Boo.
That was a live one.
Commissioners, if you're ready, I'd like to welcome everyone to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is May 21st, 2024. And I'd like to introduce our planning commissioners to you. First is Vice Chair Mike Rodriguez.
Welcome.
Second is Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, Commissioner Asia King, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. I'm your chair this evening, Commissioner Bill Roshan. And we're very happy to have you here. And if we could, I'd like to say that we have established a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order, and if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you all, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, any commissioner announcements before we begin business? Hearing none. I'd like to open public comment. This is a chance for anybody to speak who has a concern or comment that's not on the agenda and/or can't stay for the agenda items. Would anybody like to speak at this point, a public comment? Chris Creed, do we have anybody in the queue?
We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Seeing no takers, I'll close public comment. Consent calendar, commissioners. We do have minutes from April 16th. Any comments on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll move directly to the public hearing. I'd like to introduce case number Coastal Development Permit, CDP 24-014. The site location is 499 Little Morro Creek Road. And we have Kim here with us tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Susanna will be providing the staff report.
Great.
Thank you, Chairman Roshan, and good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. The project before you tonight is a request for a coastal development permit to demolish and rebuild a single-family home irreparably damaged by the January 2023 storms at 499 Little Morro Creek Road. The project is a 2023 federal flood disaster rebuild. The property owners and applicants are Heather and Travis Baker. The agent is Ryan Chandler. The property is zoned RSA with a CRP-CR overlay and contains environmentally sensitive habitat, or ESH, in the northern corner of the property. The CRP-CR overlay is a new overlay from the zoning code. It is the cultural resources overlay. The lot is located within the coastal appeals jurisdiction. This is an image of the existing 47,474 square-foot parcel as seen from Little Morro Creek Road that gives context to the site as it currently sits. Directly ahead in the picture is the existing garage that will remain, and on the left is the existing home that was damaged in the storms. The project as designed meets all applicable development standards from the city's zoning This is the site plan that illustrates the proposed 2,240-square-foot modular, single-family home with the existing 799-square-foot garage, along with the other existing accessory structures. I've also provided the existing landscaping plan, which shows the existing vegetation. The landscaping that exists goes above and beyond what the zoning code requires for residential landscaping, which is a minimum of 50% of the front yard setback. This is the photo simulation of the proposed development that shows the architectural details, colors, and materials of the design. As shown, the project will include raising the proposed home above the base flood elevation per FEMA requirements. The overall height of the proposed development, including the earthen mound, is 22 feet and seven and a half inches. The height of just the home from the top of the earthen mound is roughly 18 and a half As for the city's approved residential design guidelines, the project is compliant regarding relationship to the existing homes and scale and mass as it meets the height and lot coverage requirements. The single-family home is consistent with the structures on adjacent properties. The proposed home meets the proportional relationship requirements as related to scale and mass. Surface articulation, the proposed project provides, it's modular home, so it provides a gable roof along with various windows and window doors to provide visual interest. Building orientation, it's a big lot. It is oriented like a majority of the homes along Little Morro Creek Road, so it's consistent with the surroundings. Garage and driveway design, no changes to the garage or driveway are being proposed. For sustainable design features, all plants proposed are low-water plant species. Outdoor light fixtures shall be pointed downward and shall be shielded. The home will also propose roof-mounted solar panels. For building materials, the home will utilize board and batten siding in the color linen ruffle with white trim. The concrete stairs leading up to the home will have black handrails. For architectural elements, the home is being proposed further south than it was previously due to the constraints from the environmentally sensitive habitat on the northern portion of the property. All windows are mindful of the existing adjacent properties, and all architectural elements on the proposed modular home are balanced and appropriate to the size of the home. And for landscaping, as discussed on a previous slide, the existing landscaping goes above the 50% required front landscaping requirements, and all the existing landscaping is low-water and drought-tolerant, with no irrigation proposed. Therefore, it is staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 0224, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for permit number CDP 24-014 for the proposed demolition/reconstruction of the single-family home at 499 Little Morro Creek Road. And I'm switching mics, so hopefully that issue is resolved. That is all. Thank you.
Any questions for staff, please? Eric?
This is just a sort of a general question, not specific to this project. What does it take to, or what is it that strikes or creates the need for an historic survey on a property when they're going to change the property or make it, in this case, demolition? I know in some cases I see Morro Bay where homes are required to have an historic resource evaluation. Is that just something that's driven by staff decision, or is there an automatic?
So that comes from the new zoning code, the, what I mentioned, the CRP-CR overlay. The CRP section in the new zoning code is coastal resource protection, and the CR overlay from that is cultural resources. So that's a new overlay in our zoning code. Anything within that overlay requires a site, archaeological site assessment for...
So I'm not specifically talking about archaeology. I'm talking about cultural resources, more like historic, is it an historic home? Who lived in the home?
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
Historic home, that is any home 50 years and older without any facade work previously done on it. That's when we require the historical evaluation for those homes, and I believe that's set by the state and SEQA.
And so this home didn't qualify?
No.
Okay. I'm just, I just wanted to verify. I've seen it on some homes, and I was questioning why they qualified. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Eric, thank you. Michael? Joe?
I feel I should ask this question. Is there evidence that the house, if it had a foundation raised by two feet at the time of the flood, would have avoided flooding and the damage? I mean, is there evidence that two feet is sufficient to avoid it in the future?
The two feet is established by FEMA. That's the regulations that they have to follow for building in the base flood zone. I'm not sure if any evaluation was done on this specific property regarding if two feet would have prevented any flood damage, but they're following... Oh, and we do have Heather here, the applicant.
Yeah. The applicant will give it a, give a presentation in a minute?
I'm not sure of a presentation, but she can speak.
Okay. We gotta turn the mic on. Chris, do we have a mic on?
I don't see a button.
Hang on, they're gonna turn it on.
Testing, testing, okay. I can speak to your question.
You're good.
Our home filled with about 42 inches of water. So there is a, from the flood on January 9th, 2023. And the subsequent flood on March 10th of 2023, we got about 36 inches of water, if I'm remembering correctly. So there is a very definitive line on the home of where the water was. The proposed two feet above base flood elevation, the base flood elevation is essentially almost where that high-water mark was on the first flood, within a couple inches. And so the two feet above that, which I believe that we're even going a couple inches above that for extra safety's sake, should be more than sufficient. So it would not have flooded if it was that high.
Joe, good. Asia?
I don't have any questions. I was just gonna say, I think that our base flood elevation analysis was redone in 2018, 2019 for this area. FEMA does different areas periodically, and ours is pretty updated, so...
But no questions.
Susanna, thank you. Do we get a presentation from the applicant?
No presentation, but they are here and available for questions.
Would you want to come up one more time? And we'll ask the commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? No?
Well, I'll ask.
Okay, Michael?
Only because I'll be able to say that I was there today. So I have the feed off that side. I did visit the site for a half an hour today, got out of my car. I didn't want to go down the driving lot because that would have been trespassing.
We appreciate that.
So, but, you know, I give you a lot of credit for rebuilding there. I mean, I don't know if I could do it, but, you know, it's, you know, near a creek, a flood zone, so, you know, I just give you a lot of credit for doing that. But I think the question was, you know, the elevation, you gave me 24 feet, if that's two, 24 inches, if that's two feet, right? But you're obviously building up from a certain new level. Can you explain that to me? How you're, how you're coming up to the point where you feel confident that you won't get water?
Like in Susanna's presentation, there will be an earthen mound, so essentially a dirt, a dirt hill. On top of that will be the foundation on which then the home will be placed. It will be on a permanent foundation, so it will be as close to a stick-built home as you can possibly get. I believe that if we had put a steeper roof pitch, it might have encroached on our height limitations, although that was, was a architectural detail we were hoping to do. And let me tell you, when you're talking about historical homes, this, my husband and I bought that home, that property in 2015. And it was like one of those dream come true's, like, oh my gosh, we're gonna come in by the skin of our teeth and we're gonna do this. And it was never our intention to have to demolish it, but with...
It's pretty sad to not get to know.
Yeah. So we're keeping what we can of it. But with the flood insurance rates, we'd end up paying essentially a loan's worth, a mortgage worth of flood insurance a month, that it just feasibly doesn't make sense. We have two small children who are six and three, and we want to send them to college someday. So there's all these, you know, factors that we, we went back and forth and back and forth, and you can't buy a one-acre parcel in Morro Bay. I mean, has anybody seen anything for $500,000? So we are stuck in the flood zone in a beautiful city that we love very much, so...
Yeah, and I just appreciate the fact that the council has taken that very seriously since the flooding and staff is really on top of it as well. So thank you. I just wanted to hear that level of confidence, because I couldn't do it.
Yeah, we never want to go through that again, and so we have made it in our own best interest to make sure that this house is gonna be a long-term home. I mean, if the dirt floods, that's not such a big deal. We've gotten some really interesting weeds, but the house should be longstanding.
Great.
Just let me say, thank you guys for being here tonight. If I could just ask, it's traumatic what you went through. Could you tell us a little bit about what the process was?
We, well, I think you talk about the traumatic part. The most traumatic part is getting all your kids' stuff and all your family heirlooms and all the things that were below 42 inches of water. I mean, every piece of furniture, every, you know, anything that we had that was below 42 inches of water had to get thrown away. And I guess traumatic is trying to tell your kids that they can't go home.
Yeah, definitely.
So we're just, we're just trying to get our kids...
How about the process with FEMA? Can you tell us a word or two about that?
That is my center of expertise. This process has, to teach you patience is saying it lightly. The amount of hoops that every federal, state, city agency that we have to jump through coastal, you know, there are an astronomical amount of hoops. There's different answers to the same question. And so the, the fact that we are here today, we are very grateful to finally be at this point. We were hoping to be here six months ago, but, you know, with everything, we're dealing with lots of different people, lots of different entities, and none of it has been easy, and so, thank you.
I think it takes a lot of perseverance and tenacity, like, it's taken on a whole another full-time job to just...
Yeah.
Get the paperwork taken care of, answer questions, re-answer the same question, just keep going, keep going, keep going, not settle for, well, you guys could just do this. Well, that's not what it is.
Yeah.
We wanna do it correctly.
Yeah, we want, we want to be here where our daughter can walk to high school from our property, you know?
We very much appreciate your efforts, and thank you for staying in Morro Bay.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Any other questions?
Joe, Joe has a question.
Did I, did I hear that you would have preferred to have a higher pitched roof, but you were constrained by the...
I believe it would have gotten close to the height requirement, so the cost is also some things as well. So there's lots of different aspects, but...
I was, I was, I was going to ask a question if we had any ability to make an exception in this case.
Oh, make an exception? Okay.
If you, if you wanted to go above the...
We do not want this process to take any longer at this point. We have done, we have done all of the things we can do to get to this point as fast as we have, and so we look forward to sprinting through the finish, hopefully.
Were you...
My goal is to be in this house by Thanksgiving, if God willing.
Well, the manufactured house is gonna help with some of that, and your drawings are strong. I looked at all the drawings in terms of the, you know, civil engineering and all of that, and they looked really good. Did you pick the prefab, the prefabricated house yourselves?
Yeah. I, I grew up, I'm from a family of Napa Valley architects and landscape architects, so when we talk about...
Wow.
Appreciating a home for what it is, you know, to then go to manufacture it is very difficult, but we picked the highest quality we could and tried to make it as, look as much like a normal home as possible, so...
Yeah. I think the product, I'm an architect too, so the product is getting better and better, so that's why I was asking.
It is, yeah.
No, thank you for that, too.
Later on down the road, when finances allow and we get some bigger landscaping, it'll, it won't be such a visual distraction from the street.
Well, great to have you here tonight, and again, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to open public comment and invite anybody up who has a question to ask or a comment to make on this project. Welcome, and tell us your name if you will.
Hi, my name is Linda Winters, and I live in a mobile home park adjacent to the creek. And I have been through six floods, and I can speak from firsthand experience, the trauma that is involved in when you come back to your home and it has been submerged, that I experienced in March 10th of 1995. Then again, and there was another flood in 2018. And then the three floods, there's not always mention of the three, the third flood in 2023. It's very traumatic. Dealing with FEMA is extraordinary. When my husband and I moved to a higher spot in the same park that we lived in because we lost our first home, and when we moved to the higher spot, we put that new mobile home in six inches above the flood level. And this one in January 9th came to within, once again, six inches of coming into our home. So living in a flood plain presents its problems. You just need to be prepared. I congratulate you for coming back. I can certainly understand why you want to. Who doesn't want to live in Morro Bay? And there's, if you, if you need firsthand experience, I'm more than happy to share it with you, but thank you very much.
Thanks for speaking. Anyone else have a comment? Chris, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Owen Champy, and we own the property. It's approximately northwest of the Baker's property on Errol Street. And when I heard her story in front of council, I think it was about six months ago, I was flabbergasted and broken-hearted for them. I'm well aware of the flooding and the damage and everything else, but to have someone who was putting in a position where their primary residence was now in complete jeopardy and they had nowhere for their family to go was very unsettling for me. My primary residence isn't here, but I, we also had flood issues where we were, so to have to pick up your family and leave is, is tough. And I see that the city has worked to help them where they could with fees and things like that. I'm sorry they're subject to all the regulation, but I certainly hope that their project goes well. We fully support them moving back into the property, and anything we can do as neighbors, we would certainly like to offer our help. So, thank you.
Thanks for speaking. Anyone else? Terry, welcome.
Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I just wanted to get for the record that this is an all-inclusive conditional use permit, and they won't have to come back again for the replacement structure. It implies that in the way the project's described, but it also could be interpreted the other way. So just like to hear staff say that this is it, they can go from here to a building permit. Thank you.
Susanna, could you respond?
Yes, that's correct. The coastal development permit will include both the demolition of the damaged home and the replacement with the modular home.
Great. Chris, do we have anybody on the queue, please?
Chair Roshan, we have nobody with a raised hand.
If that's the case, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, final questions, comments? Eric?
I know this property as the Logan family home, and they're the prior owners, and I've played on this property as a kid, and it is really a magical little spot. It's kind of what, it's, it's, in the old days, you would have called this area part of the willows, and it's, but it still feels like the old days on this parcel. And it's, as a kid to grow up there, they're gonna be really fortunate. And so I have no comments as to the project, other than I'm happy to see it moving forward, and I wish you all the best.
Others? Michael?
Well, I didn't see any other comments, but I was gonna make a motion, but ready?
Please.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to conditionally approve the requested coastal development permit, CDP 24-014, for the project at 499 Little Morro Creek Road, as shown by staff's report.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'd like to add one quick comment, which is, one, we would like to make this as supportive and as easy as possible, which is, you know, I don't, I don't think there's much we can do to help, but we really do appreciate your efforts, and we're so glad you decided to stay. So welcome back.
And, and I made the motion, but I'd like to make a comment after that motion.
Sure.
And I'd like to just thank again the, the owners for sticking around. You know, the city takes this very seriously. We take it very seriously, and we hopefully won't have or see flooding there again after we bought the property. Thank you.
Susanna, would you pull the commission?
Yes, of course. Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner King? Yes. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chairperson Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
If it's okay, could we give the Bakers a round of applause?
I was gonna say, it's not often that all of us and Terry agree on something. You got us all on the same page.
I'm not really, but you didn't say anything bad.
And when you have your housewarming, we'd like to get invited.
Thank you, guys. With that, we had, we do have a piece under New Business, and this is about the water equivalency units. And could we have some guests tonight? Would you introduce yourselves for us?
We're getting him on the good microphone.
Could we, Chris, we need our mics on.
Testing, yes. I'm Cindy Cecil.
They're on.
All the mics are on.
What's that?
Try again.
It appears to be on.
Yeah, you can, you have to speak sometimes right into the...
There you go. My name is Cindy Cecil. I am a city engineer, just started about, close to two months ago.
Ah, welcome.
Thank you.
And I am Greg Qualick, Director of Public Works.
Welcome back.
Thank you. And happy to present to you, the planning commission, chair and commissioners, our request to allocate water equivalency units for the next fiscal year. For those of you that have been around, this is a bit of a routine request. We come every May or June and make this request, along with some information about our water supply. And this is required by the municipal code. So moving on, just an outline on what we'll discuss tonight. We'll present a short water supply background, the current conservation requirements that we have in place for water use, and then the recommended actions to allocate water equivalency units for future projects. So our water supply background, as you all know, the State Water Project provides almost all of the city's water supply currently. So let's talk about State Water Project. Morro Bay is a subcontractor to the San Luis Obispo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. That district takes in 25,000 acre-feet per year from the state, and they are the direct contractor with the Department of Water Resources. Morro Bay does not have a direct contract with the state. Morro Bay is a subcontractor to the county, or we'll call them the district, and then the county is the contractor with the state. So 25,000 acre-feet per year around these parts, that, that sure is a lot, but the city and the 10 subcontractors have a contract to deliver only 4,830 of those. And Morro Bay is the largest of those subcontractors at 1313 acre-feet per year. And Morro Bay is the largest of those subcontractors at 1313 acre feet per year. And then, some of the subcontractors, including Morro Bay, purchase what's called the drought buffer, and that includes 5,707 acre feet per year, and that is to protect those subcontractors in years of low allocations from the state. So, that means that the district has a remaining 14,463 acre feet per year that it does not use, and that water gets stored in San Luis Reservoir, which is not in San Luis County, San Luis Obispo County, but a bit up north, and it is called the district's unsubscribed allocation. That water saves us, by us, I mean the city of Morro Bay, during drought years when the city has run out of its stored water. The county historically has made us whole during those years, using this stored unsubscribed allocation. And here's a map that I think even if you squint from the dais, you will not be able to see all the little tank numbers, but the important point is, you can tell that Morro Bay is the green, the green blob on the left there in the center of the screen, and the blue lines are the state water project. And to the far right, somewhat parallel to the five, you have the California Aqueduct, and branching off of that is what's called the coastal branch, that's the state water supply that we all have access to here. And then branching off again is the Chora Valley Pipeline, that after the, the pipe comes down the grade, it goes gravity all the way to Morro Bay. So, that is the geography there. The water does get treated up at Polonio Pass, it's one of those red barrel-looking icons, sort of center top, so that is where our water is getting treated. So, even though we had a flush year from a water standpoint last year, and a pretty good year this year as well, the state has only set its allocation at 40%. So, just, you know, the state is constantly looking at ways to preserve water, to store it up, so that it has it during the drought years, and that's, that's what it is doing. With that 40% allocation, we actually have an allocation of 1,441.2 acre feet for this year. And we could talk about that calculation if anyone's interested, but that is essentially our, our normal allocation plus the drought buffer. And so, to give you an idea, the city's demand is typically around 1,100 acre feet per year. And with that, you can conclude that we have enough water this year. So, that is our very short-term situation. State water does not run continuously once a year, or almost once a year. The state water project shuts down for maintenance, sometimes it's two weeks, sometimes it's three, four, five weeks. And how does the city of Morro Bay continue providing water to its customers? Well, we don't have storage here. The tanks that we have have about a day's worth of storage, depending on the season, maybe two during a slow season. And so, we pump water out of the Morro Basin. That is our secondary water supply. We have a permit limitation on that water to pull 581 acre feet per year from that basin. And most of that water is pulled from around Lila Kaiser Park, the high schools, we have seven wells to, to get that water. That said, 581, it's about half of our estimated demand annually, but that is prior to the treatment of that water, so we have to treat that water through the brackish water reverse osmosis system on Atascadero Road, and that takes around 25% out of the running for deliverable potable water, which leaves us with around 425 acre feet per year maximum that we could deliver from the Morro Basin, given the permit limitation and our method of treatment. So, you know, if we lost state water, for example, that we would, we would not be in good shape. So, water conservation, you know, over time, the city has, has put in and implemented water conservation measures that have actually reduced water consumption significantly, we'll talk about that in a minute. But the winter storms in 2023 and 2024 dramatically changed the drought conditions and, in, in the state and the county, and so, last year on April 25th, City Council reduced the requirements from severely restricted conditions, we're talking about water conservation, to moderately restricted conditions. The big, the big picture there is that you can do outdoor irrigation now every day of the week, but there is still a restriction on the watering time. So, it is prohibited during the day between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. The severely restricted conditions, I don't, I don't have, I don't remember the exact days, but certain addresses could do, you know, like Monday, Wednesday kind of thing, like two or three days a week. So, we now can do it every day. And let's talk about what a water equivalency unit is. So, this is a program, we'll call them WBUs for short, this is a program that was due to a voter initiative called Measure F in 1984, and it was a self-described growth management system, that's population growth, and it attempted to regulate the addition of new water users to the city's water system, and arguably, it still does so today. It's not that simple, but you know, that's the idea. The idea was that it would ensure the demand for water does not exceed available water supply. Now, this is from a time before state water, so we didn't have this big behemoth water supply that we, you know, usually could rely on. This is back when the city was pumping from, from my understanding, largely the Chora Basin, which we don't do anymore. So, a water equivalency unit is a measurement of water, and that's equal to the every, the average amount of water used by single-family residents over the period of one year, and that calculation is currently .2 acre feet. So, on average, a, a single-family household will use .2 acre feet per year, and that is based on the assumption of 90 gallons per capita per day within that household, with the assumption of the average of 1.9 persons per unit. So, to give you an idea, an acre foot is around 300,000 and change gallons, so .2 of that, I'm not going to attempt to do that math in my head, but it's about a fifth of, of that. So, I think I heard someone say 60,000, that, that sounds right. So, about 60,000 gallons a, a year. Thank you, whoever whispered that. So, these water equivalency units used to be issued during the building phase of a project. Kind of funny, because water equivalency units, by their nature, you know, growth management is, is kind of a long-term projection. So, if you add a hotel, or if you add a multi-unit housing project, that's going to affect water supply in perpetuity for the city. That's just an assumption that we have. And, and so, when you're in the building phase of the project, the Planning Commission knows better than anyone, that's, you know, you've already got some approvals in place to make things happen, and developers need some assurances that they're going to be able to do these things, and it just didn't really make sense. And so, I don't remember what year, it was before I started, but it was not that long ago, I think four or five years ago, the city began issuing these during the planning permit phase, and that is an acknowledgement, again, that the water equivalency unit question is more of a long-term one. And so, I just want to zoom out and verbally describe that it's, it is an interesting situation. We, we issue these based on kind of long-term projections of, of water when, when necessary, but I think most of us think about water supply in the central coast of California as a, as a year-to-year thing. You know, what does it look like this year? What's it, next year's a whole, you know, that could be anything, it's totally unpredictable, but what, what does it look like this year? But what we know right now is that even when state water is low, we got two years in a row of 5% allocations from the state, which is pretty dismal, even during those tough years, the district, the county pulled through and made the city whole. And we know that our recycled water project, think of it what you will, will enhance our water supply in the Morro Basin, and that should be online by the end of 2016. Excuse me, 2026, I'm in the wrong decade. So, that is not going to save us from our water woes, that's going to help us a bit, it'll add a few hundred acre feet per year when needed, we'll still be relying on the state water project, but I say all this just to kind of give the, the commission a, a very real picture of what we're doing here. We are going to say, or we're, we're at, we're requesting that the Planning Commission says, please allocate, you know, X number of water equivalency units, it's on the basis of the understanding that, right now, we're able to keep the balls up in the air, we're not dropping any balls in terms of water, and there's no reason to believe that we are under any kind of immediate threat. That said, I'll be, I'll come out there and say, you know, the, the future of water is, is, there's full of unknowns, and I'm not going to go into all the vulnerabilities of the state water system, but they do exist. And so, you know, other solutions, in my view, should continue to be looked at, but that's not really the question here. The question here is, what are we doing in terms of these allocations? So, last year, the City Council allocated 115 units for development, and of those 115 units, only 21.6 were issued. So, of those 21.6, two were single-family residencies, five were multifamily, and then there was 14.6 commercial. I do want to say that this is not a comprehensive list of all building activity, for example, it does not include ADUs. ADUs float under the radar when it comes to WBUs. They're only required, ADUs are only required to be issued when there is a change in use. For example, there's a vacant lot, and now we're going to build on it. We're going to build a single-family home, multifamily, commercial, or if there is, you know, a two-unit apartment building, and now it's going to be a 20-unit hotel, that's a change in use, the calculations are made, and, and in terms of what number of WBUs that requires to move the project forward, and then those are issued, up to a limit. So, 21.6 is actually a really big number, even though it falls well below the 115, most years, we're issuing a handful, I think the year before, was it, was it one or two? Yeah, it was one or two. So, and, and again, that's not because we didn't have the water or anything like that, it's just because that's what development looks like in, in Morro Bay. Some years, we're going to get a lot, and most years, we, we don't. If someone is, you know, renovating their home or building new, like the Bakers, for example, like, I don't believe they would get a, a WBU. I'm, I'm just going to say that, I don't think, yeah. So, a lot of the work that the Planning Department does just doesn't really apply to this. So, and I, you know, we could talk about this all night, I won't bore everyone, but ultimately, the recommendation is to, for the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council that we issue the same number of WBUs that we do every year, which is 115, and that's comprised of 30 single-family residential, 20 multifamily residential, and 65 for commercial development for the next fiscal year, and happy to take questions.
Yeah, we do have a few questions, I think. Welcome back, we get to see you once a year, I think. And I think we asked you this question last year, but I'm going to ask it again. This, the WBUs are not cumulative, right? They're, they happen each and every year, separate and apart?
Yes. My understanding is, there was a time when they carried over from one year to the, to another, we, we don't do that now.
We don't do that now. And I did want to ask you about unit count. The way these are done, like it's 1.9, I think your ratio was, per unit, and that would, would equal it. If we were looking at opportunities for smaller houses, micro-units, for example, where you might be able to have, where you had one unit before, you could have four very tiny units, how do you think that would impact the allocation? Is that something that, it's not a pressing issue, but it is a potential question?
So, good question, we probably wouldn't change it, and the reason for that is because the 1.9 comes from the general plan. And so, like a lot of things in public works, even down to the diameter of a sewer pipe, those calculations are based on what's in the city's general plan. So, if the general plan was amended, and that 1.9 changed something else, then, then we would change our calculation.
So, it would have to come through a general plan amendment, is what you think?
Yes.
Got it.
And, and if I could just say, otherwise, the Public Works Department would need to create its own, maybe rogue calculation of what, what a housing unit looks like, and what comprises a housing unit in Morro Bay, and that's just, that's just not what we do, that's not what engineers do. We give that to the plan.
No, your answer makes sense. Thanks, Greg. Others? Eric?
Yeah, with respect to WEU allocation, this Measure F, is, is that essentially what's driving the breakout of commercial versus single-family versus, or what, what's, what's driving the percentage breakouts between single-family, multiple, multifamily, and commercial? How does, how does that allocation happen? Who determines that?
That's just historical practice. I believe we've recommended that same breakdown for, for many years, and because we never come anywhere close to it, again, this was a very high year, and it was less than 25%, there's just been no need to make any changes there.
So, the follow-up is that the, is there an average, can you give us the WEU, the water equivalency units annually over a period of time? In other words, rather than just one year, is there, do we have as, as a city, year by year by year by year, and is there some number you might be able to pull out of the hat? That is what actually gets used versus specifically just last year's usage?
Sure, I mean, that would take some staff time to, to pull together, and there's been some turnover in terms of role, but we could certainly get that information.
I'm mostly just looking really rough, like, is it just half, is it 30%, is it 50%, is it 10%?
Most years, it's under 10 units.
That's, that's kind of what I wanted to hear. And then I have one more sort of ally, but maybe a tiny bit off this topic. There's a, a water company owned by the, or at least managed by the Vistra executives known as Morro Bay Mutual Water Company, that pulls water from, theoretically pulls water from the Morro Basin. Does that, do you know anything about the allocation for that entity?
We don't have information about that for tonight, and I, that's not something I have background knowledge in, so I'd have to look into that.
Eric, thanks. Joe?
I, I remember hearing about a year ago that the, with respect to the, the unsubscribed water that the county has, that they, they might consider selling that to other entities, and it might not be available in the future, should Morro Bay need it in a drought environment. Has there been any more movement in that area, or information, or anything?
Thank you for the question. That is the hot topic of the county in, in the water circles, and we all believe that the county intends to do that eventually. They've, they've said that, and they're looking to change policies to be able to move that unsubscribed allocation. They have reasons for wanting to do that. The county is storing the water that they store at a cost of the county taxpayer, and not every county taxpayer benefits from that storage, only the subcontractors do. And so, you know, what are the largest cities in the county? City of Slow, Paso, Atascadero, none of them are state water subcontractors. The only cities that are state water subcontractors is the city of Morro Bay and the city of Pismo Beach. I don't think there's any other cities, it's just special districts after that, and, and the prison, and possibly another entity. So, there, there is a, there is a whole lot of water out there, it's, it's drawing on county resources, it could be making money... They could be making money on it. There are a lot of questions about some other options that could be utilized to maybe provide more water to the county. One that we're looking into is potentially doing water banking. So there are programs where we could send, and I'm speaking in metaphors, but we can send water to the Central Valley. It gets put in the ground there, and we can do that during flush years. And by we, I mean the whole district and the subcontractors. And potentially even, you know, right, for example, this year, we have an extra 300 acre feet of state water that we're not going to do anything with. We could send that to the Central Valley, and then when we need it, we can get that water. Right now, what happens is, and I'm digressing a little bit, but if you'll allow me, right now, what happens is, if we don't use all of our state water in a given year, it gets stored in San Luis Reservoir. And I know I described this last year to this group, that that water gets stored up and stored up and stored up. And then the state water project zeroes it out in a process that they call spilling. And it's not a physical spill, it's a paper spill. And we just lose that, that storage. So ideally, we could, rather than store it in the San Luis Reservoir, send it somewhere else, and the county could do the same. And we could even potentially sell the water and make some money on it. And so there's a whole lot of options. I happen to be part of the state water subcontractors advisory board, well, you're not an advisory board, but let's say like PWA. And so that is, that is the hot issue that we're working on. Because we do think that insofar as the city of Morro Bay has paid into the system, along with the other subcontractors, we have a stake in all of that water.
Asia?
Yeah, could you go back to your last slide? So I'm just trying to calculate in my mind what this, what these units equate to. So if we allocated 50 WBUs to residential development, and if a single-family home on a new lot, or sorry, on an empty parcel, a new lot that's being developed, takes 1.9 units? Is that what you said? Or 0.2?
So let's, can you ask a question again?
I guess my question is, how many, how many of these units are allocated for one single-family resident?
One. And that's, but that's going to be based on usage. But our understanding is, and this is something that the planning department determines, but if, if one, so a single-family residence that's being developed where there was a vacant lot, or there was nothing there, that would be adding one unit or one WBU to the system. And that is calculated at, you know, 0.2 acre feet per year, based on an assumption of 1.9 people living in the home.
So essentially, 50 units is, would roughly equate to 50 housing units, or single-family housing units. So then, and I'll look to Kim and Bill to keep me within the bounds of our conversation on this. But say there was a planned unit development that was going to happen someday, maybe, in town. Are planned unit developments allocated the same way?
So we're talking about bigger developments that may exceed these numbers? Yeah, I mean, the great example we would have is the panorama, and...
I was trying not to name it.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess I'm speaking a little freely. But yeah, I mean, that's one that we've talked about internally, how that would be handled. And when the previous community development director was here, he wasn't very concerned because we could, we could do it over two years. And so, you know, I don't anticipate that the city of Morro Bay will ever have a development that's so large that we couldn't figure something like that out. So we'd allocate, you know, we'd issue, you know, 21-year and 20 the next.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just thinking, I wouldn't want...
Can I follow up on that?
Infill to, or planned unit development to...
Are you finished yet?
Include infill building as well.
No, it's a good question, Asia. Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, that brings to mind the question, if someone did come in for, you know, more than the allowable water equivalency units, is there a line? Is there a list? What if there was, what if one project came in for, you know, and took all of them for two years? What happens to everybody else? How do we prioritize that?
Yeah, and that, you know, ultimately, my understanding is it's first come, first served. And that, those would be decisions made by the community development department. You know, I'll just mention, while we're all here, that there's a possibility that the developer could challenge these rules. And so that could be an outcome of that sort of situation. But I think the goal, at least of the former community development director, was to try to work with the developers to figure out how they can get through their projects, working within these constraints. So I don't think we'd do anything differently.
Michael?
And just to close that circle there, you could also charge more for that water if they're going above their allocation, right? That's always a possibility. You can always charge more for excesses in use. That's just, I'm throwing that out there, because that's how utilities do it. Use more than the average, so you're going to charge you more for that water. That's just normal practice in the industry. So let me ask my question. So at the California level, let's talk California, then I'm going to talk about regional level. Getting back to SLO. I worked for the state of California for 20 years, but 20 in the business, in the water industry. So obviously, California's always going to be in a drought, period. We're, you know, we're a state that's always in the, in a drought, regardless of how much water we get. And all it takes is for one bad year, one drought year, to put us back to the point where we're getting nothing from the state water project. Or two years, for sure. Three years, we're not going to get anything. So, and then at the regional level, I think it's, it's good that we're doing the conservation efforts we're doing, because that has been a big impact, right? You said that. And the water banking part of it, where I worked at the water district for 12 years, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, we were the first county, the first region in the state of California to bank water. So we were actually making money, making money on the water we were not using, putting it in a bank and having other people use it, but paying us to use it. So keep on that. That's going to work if you can get there. But I was really concerned about the zero allocation from the state water project, because I know we've been there before, right? Where we got nothing from the state.
We came very close. We had a couple of 5% allocation years, two in a row. And the second one, so the state, the state water project initially, it's sort of like, you know, going to a car dealership, trying to buy a car. I mean, their initial offer is very low. And so come November, they will say, you're only getting X percent. And the one year, I think they, when I was here, they came to us and said, it's really going to be 55 gallons per capita. It's going to be like, for life and health reasons only, that's all you're getting. And then they came back and said, actually, you're going to get five. So they typically come three or four times. And assuming there's, I mean, unless there's no rain, the allocations increase after they reevaluate it. And so we haven't had a zero allocation when I was here, but we did come close.
Yeah, and that's, the point is that 40% of our water comes from that source, right? That's the state water project. Did you say 40%?
Like 95%.
Oh, 95, whoa, 95%. So most of our water comes from that. So we got to 5% where we kind of lost it all, you know. So all I'm saying is, I think that the efforts we're making are good efforts, especially in conservation and looking for other sources, and banking our water versus just putting it away and, you know, not, it's not doing anything for us, we're just putting it away. So that's all I wanted to say. Go ahead.
Cindy, Greg, thank you. I'm going to go to public comment. And I'd like to open public comment and invite anybody who would like to speak on this issue to come forward. Kerry, welcome.
Mr. Chair, you knew I was here for a reason. There's an old saying that in California, whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over. We have had periods in California where the fight has gotten very intense, and it's driven a lot of people to drink. And right now, we're not in one of those periods. But we, as Vice Chairman Rodriguez points out, we could, we're always just one bad season away from another round of arguing over water, fighting over water. The county has seriously considered, in fact, I think that there has been some discussion for Napa Water to go to Santa Maria. I'm not sure how that finally worked out. There's a lot of water swapping going on all over as people are trying to figure out how to do this. I am concerned because we, as I understand it, have an obligation to reclaim something in excess of 400 acre feet of water a year out of our water reclamation facility or our sewage treatment plant, depending on which side of that argument you're on. And yet, we only have a permit to take 500 acre feet out of the Morro Basin. And the presumption is, is that by reinjecting all of our reclaimed water into that basin, that we're going to be allowed to take it all back out. And I'm not sure that's likely to happen if we ever find ourselves without state water or driven to a very low amount of state water. And I think that this item in particular, as I read through it, and I did some research on the various Measure Fs. And Measure F died in 2000. Took six years for the city to write new ordinances to try to accommodate the idea of growth management via water. And I concur with the public works director that I think that a lot of our ordinances are very suspect in terms of withstanding a frontal assault by the lawyers representing development interests. But I guess my real point is, is that I don't think that we've really thought through a lot of our, the way in which we're managing water in this community. And because we've had this recent change where we now have all this very clean, very pure water coming out of our wastewater treatment plant, and right now, we're dumping it back in the ocean, which seems like a total loss. But the plan is to dump it into the Morro Basin to, which is a very polluted basin. A lot of it doesn't make sense to me. And I would hope that sometime over the next year or so, as we really dig into this, that there will be some serious effort to look at the whole of our water. I know our water plan is called One Water, but boy, we're so far away from having one water concept. In this town, we have two basins that we've historically used, plus state water. So there's a problem, and somebody needs to start addressing it. Thank you.
Kerry, thank you. Others? Welcome, Betty.
Hi, Betty Winholz. I have two questions and then a comment. My first question is, and I'm sure I asked this last year, and I can't remember, so I'm asking again. Do, does the city pay for the money that the county subsidizes us back when we get like a 5%? So if we get water that the county is supplying to us because we didn't get our full allotment, do we pay for that extra allotment? Or is that just part of our deal? That's one question. My second question is, and I'm trying to understand how, when you do like the businesses and say, we had the 93-unit hotel that came online, and yet we're having a six-unit unhoseded hotel, how does business deal with those allocations? Like you said, that for residential, it's one unit per single-family. But how does that work with the businesses? And then my comment is, staff has created, not necessarily this staff, but how the WBUs are done, the percentages, you asked that question. That's something that's just happened at the staff level. And the fact that ADUs and other things are not part of that calculation. It seems to me, if that's a staff decision, then the staff could change that decision, or you all, or the city council could give direction, that we want to see an actual usage of what's coming online every year. We don't want to just see the empty lot. We want to see what's really, you know, being used or added to our usage every year. Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. Cindy, Greg, do you want to respond to those two questions?
There, and I, this is more to planning. They actually assign these. But there's a table that dictates how the commercial projects are allocated, the numbers. And there's formulas that they use, depending on numbers of rooms and that sort of information. And ADUs, just another question, I think you were asking, Betty. We're actually not allowed by the state to consider anything that ADUs is extra in the water. So we're required...
So that's state law or?
That's state.
State mandate?
Yes, that it be under the residence that the ADU is associated with.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak? Hi, nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you. Michelle Lester-Catero, Morro Bay. I have a question. The state recently deemed that ADUs can now be sold as separate entities from the property. How's that going to work when it comes to water allotment? So they're now going to have to get their own water meter and be allotted a unit of water? I'm asking.
Kim, do you know the AD, I'm not sure, is that true? ADUs can now be subdivided?
ADUs cannot be sold separately from primary property.
There was discussion that because of the shortfall of housing, that an ADU would become a piece of property in its own right.
Yeah, I think the legislation's in the works, essentially.
It's in the works. So that's something that we may...
It hasn't happened yet. There would be a subdivision of the lot.
Yeah, so then, once again, how will that? Something to think about if we're going to have to allocate more water.
Yeah, Michelle, thanks. Others? Chris, do we have anybody in the queue?
Chair, we have no raised hands in the queue.
And Chair?
Okay.
Chair, if I may, we didn't answer one question that came up.
Oh, Greg, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So Ms. Winholz did ask a question about if, whether we're paying for the water that this county gives us to make us hold. And so, yes, so the city pays the state like a base rate for state water, and then also based on how much water is actually delivered. And so when we're getting our allocation, or whether we're getting the state's, or I'm sorry, the district's unsubscribed allocation, it's the same from a cost standpoint.
Thanks. So hearing no other takers, I'm going to close public comment. Commissioners, you can make your comments, final discussions. And I'm open to a motion. And who would like to start? Joe?
Well, I'm interested in Betty's suggestion that we make some effort to sort of calculate the amount of new water use on a yearly basis, without any, without any need for any kind of prohibitions, or you can't do that. I would just, it'd be nice to have a calculation of, you know, what the ADUs mean and in terms of water consumption, so that we could have a better understanding of where we are on a yearly basis. Because there seem to be so many, there seem to be a significant number of exceptions to the calculation that it might be an issue sometime in the near future. I just wonder if that's a possibility.
Kim and Greg, do you have a response?
I have an initial thought. I don't know that I have a response. But, you know, I'm very sensitive to protecting staff time to work on city council priorities and the priorities that we have in front of us every day. And, you know, unless there's some ultimate purpose to doing so, I would maybe push back on that, just from a staff perspective. I'll add, and maybe this is something that's not well-understood, or maybe it is, I don't know. But, you know, it's not as though every housing unit and every commercial unit in the city has an assigned, has an assigned WBU. So all the housing stock that was built before 1984, I mean, there's no... So we're not tracking in any real way some sort of cumulative water demand through this program. We're tracking water demand based on how much water's actually delivered. And I think that that would be the best indicator of what our water demand is, is just to look at the, look at the big meter at the end of the year and look at historical trends.
Asia?
I was going to say, and we might not be allowed to use calculations from ADUs, it sounds like.
And I mean, I'm not, at this point, I'm not even suggesting that there be any...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, at this point, I'm not even suggesting that there be any prohibition or constraints or anything. It's just for the sake of-
For knowledge.
Knowing where it's going. This would be the first step into-
And I wonder if there's got to be like engineering averages for certain size homes and whatnot. But, so, my only comment was if we might slightly adjust the number of units across the 115, across the three categories or two categories, and allocate a little bit more for residential, slightly less for commercial, just in case, like by like five units. Because part of my thinking is that if there's 50 units towards residential, and those are or not, are not allocated across single-family versus multifamily.
Excuse me. Yes, they are. It's-
They are.
Thirty, sixty, twenty.
Yeah, thirty and twenty.
So, Greg, these numbers came about, you and Scott working together?
Actually, they came about many years ago, and they've just been the same numbers we bring every year.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And it never exceeded, it sounds like.
So, it's a safe cushion from, at least historically?
Yes. And just based on conversations I've had with former staff, I mean, I would say in the last 20 years, none of these, even the 30, 20, 65, I mean, none of that has ever been, actually, the reason I brought up the Palisades development was because-
Panorama.
I mean, excuse me, panorama, is because that, that was the first one that we thought might actually present a challenge, and that's why it'd have to be split up between two years.
And the number of units there exceeds 50, possibly, yeah.
What about the new development at the, I don't remember how many units, 26, the new apartment building on Tascaro Road? How many units? The housing in 30, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that would have been in a previous year's allocation.
Right.
Yeah.
Did that exceed? It did not?
No.
I just think it would be great to be able to shift these categories, maybe, I don't know, like if there's a mechanism. It sounds like projects would have to be split up over two years if something does exceed that, which I can't see as being a great solution.
It's certainly at the Planning Commission's discretion to recommend some other arrangement. It, you know, without having historical numbers here, I haven't put you in a good position to do that, so I apologize. But, yeah, I mean, that, if that's Planning Commission's recommendation, we would take that forward.
I don't know what we're going to see about that.
But that was my inclination as well, but I think it's more of actually just making ourselves, making me feel good to do that. But it sounds like the reality isn't necessary. So, I don't know that I would be in support, even though I was thinking that way earlier today. But after hearing the discussion tonight, I don't, I don't know, other than making a point, because I believe that we want to encourage multifamily housing, and I believe that's what you're trying to say. But until such time as we see a actual projects coming, and that these projects come far enough in advance that we would probably be able to-
That's what my response is, that it takes more than a year to implement.
And they're allocated at time of building approval, essentially, or at time of project approval.
They're issued, so they're allocated now, they're issued to specific projects at time of planning approval. And I would submit that should we, should staff encounter a situation that we know we're going to have a problem approving a development, it certainly would be within, as I understand it, within our ability to bring that to the city council and potentially to be having the Planning Commission as well. I would argue that perhaps, well, you know, I'm going to hold that thought. But, yeah, I think we'd be able to bring it forward again and make a change in the middle of the year if we needed to.
I guess, I'm curious, like, I don't know, if you guys can talk about it, but what was the plan for panorama? Was just to do, I don't understand how that works. If you're permitting a project in one year, but it exceeds the allocation, you would have to twice permit the project.
So, it wouldn't necessarily be two permits. It would be two separate issuances of the water equivalency units. And so, this is a fiscal year exercise. And so, again, this is just based on my conversations with the former Community Development Director, because the Community Development Department actually does these issuances. Well, yes, the issuances. So, his idea was that we would issue a certain number towards the end of fiscal year, and then the rest of them at the beginning of the next fiscal year. So, it really was more of an administrative dance to make it work for that developer. But I believe that the project is moving more slowly than anticipated.
And his take was that would not impact approvals or permitting?
Yes.
Not to, and just my last comment on this, because what happens when a large development might be approved, and then you've got like a single lot that wants to get developed, and they have to wait a whole extra year after approval, but it sounds like maybe it's administrative, so they don't have to wait. Just looking at what can we do to reduce that barrier to get further housing built, and this feels like an additional barrier.
So, I'll just add in there, and this is the thought I wanted to hold, but, I mean, that's part of the intention of these regulations, is to slow down development, because it's to manage growth. And one way to do that is to understand as developments come in incrementally what the impact is on our water supply. So, you know, I don't, I don't know that, I was not in California in 1984, but I don't know what the housing crisis was then, or if there was one. And so, I, we may be facing different times. That, you know, the Planning Commission may want to have another look at the whole program. But, you know, as of right now, I think a proponent of the program would say that, yes, that, that means it's working.
That's the point. That's why I'm arguing about it. But until it comes up, I can see.
Eric.
Just, I don't need specifics, but in generalization, you mentioned that our current annual acre-feet demand was 11,000, or, I'm sorry, 1,100 acre-feet for the city. Over time, has Morro Bay's allocation, demand rather, is it stable? Is it decreasing? Is it increasing? Can you talk to that at all?
It's relatively stable. It was actually a bit higher a few years ago, 10 years ago or so. And we had the, we had the droughts in the 2010s, and then conservation measures were put into place, and then there was a dip in usage, and it's relatively stable.
Okay, thank you.
Michael.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just make a comment, and then I'm going to ready for motion. But I want to make this real important comment, that when the state issued mandatory, you know, conservation requirements to counties and cities, I mean, that really had an effect. And it stuck, right? People started conserving water. So, I'm just saying, we can't leave that. It's been good for us. So, I'll make a motion through the Chair. I would like to motion that the Planning Commission approve, allocate 50 WEUs for residential development, 30 SFR, and 20 MFR, and 65 to commercial development, for a total of 115 WEUs for 2024 and 2025.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Do we have further discussion? Asia's point?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment regarding Asia's, but I just wanted to get the motion out there that we could be ready to go.
Okay.
I think that the Planning Commission can help as far as what Terry was saying. I think we're not in a position right now, when 95% of your source comes from a place where they could shut it off tomorrow, you need to do better planning. And I think the planner, the Planning Commission, we have the skills and ability to help counsel and better plan as we further develop our city in water use and whatever, conservation, banking, all of those things. I just think we could possibly form a subcommittee, and I'd be willing to sit on it, since I have 22 years of experience doing this, to help our city better plan our use of water moving forward.
Okay.
Given our limited resource, by the way, water's not an unlimited utility. It's a limited resource, and the rates are only going to go up, by the way. They're not going to go down.
Asia, do you want to respond? How would you like to respond to this motion?
I think that what I would be, I would be satisfied with some kind of mechanism to revisit when, if problems arise.
Also, maybe with the new director coming in, I think it makes sense to coordinate that with the new director, because this is a, maybe a bigger effort than just a decision today.
Sure, yeah. And it doesn't make sense to just move five units around here and there, I think.
That's my concern.
It's a bigger question.
Yeah.
Can I ask Commissioner King a question? Do you think a subcommittee of the Planning Commission could help in that effort? Remember, staff's time is limited. I've got the time to, and the background, you probably do too.
I don't know. Oh, no, I don't have the time.
I'm going to make a suggestion on the subcommittee. Again, I'd like to pause that until we have our new director in place, because I think it is about allocation of staff time, as well as the, let's call it, the priority of this issue.
I don't think there's that much developable land in town to worry about this subject as much as we're discussing, given the historical trend of being dramatically over-allocated in with WEUs that we don't use. And while I appreciate the suggestions that Commissioner King has made, as I mentioned before, I, I too, I was actually thinking we could combine single-family and multifamily into just water equivalency units for residential development, and let it be at that, because I think this would be something that could be challenged in court, the fact that we separated out a lesser amount for multifamily and a greater amount for single-family. And the only other thing I would add is that, also to Commissioner King's comment, that I think that there should be some priority, let's say, given to a single-unit development, rather than someone coming in with 50, or 20, or 40, or some great number of units. Like, if there's a tract coming in, I don't think necessarily the tract should kick everybody else out for a year or two.
Well, the issue would be, it would, it would take over, and then you would have no other development.
No other development, is what Asia is saying.
So, there should be maybe another, another category considered even.
Somehow, although it's, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time belaboring an issue that isn't really a problem. I just, in theory, don't like what I'm seeing. But in practice, I haven't seen it be a problem. So, it's some, there's a quirk in there.
So, I'll offer, I feel the same ill at ease, but I don't think now's the time to act. So, again, I would ask for a pause until the new director comes on, and we can put this under sort of future considerations, right, future agenda items, and revisit it with, you know, his or her, I think, you know, allocations of staff time. Are we good with that?
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Just one quick point of clarification. The motion isn't to approve these allocations tonight. The motion is to recommend that the city council approves-
Change my words. Recommend that the city council.
Okay.
Right.
That's the motion.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with that clarification and that discussion, any further discussion? Would you pull the commission, Kim?
Yes. Commissioner Graffio?
I vote yes to recommend it.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Cindy and Greg, see you next year. You guys look good every year.
Thank you.
With that, unfinished business, commissioners? Anything?
Future agenda items, maybe?
There is a future agenda item, the next issue.
Okay.
So, Planning Commissioner comments, future agenda items. Do we have any? Eric?
I recently read a, an historical appraisal of a home in town that belonged to an artist. And that description described many of the other artists in the 20s and 30s and 40s and beyond in Morro Bay. And I don't think that Morro Bay has done a good job recognizing itself as an art colony. And that history, I think, is perhaps more important as time goes on than it has been in the past. We are many things, one of which is an art colony. And I just would, would like to somehow have more discussion around Morro Bay as an art colony, maybe some sort of future agenda item that we then could perhaps recommend to city council in some way, shape, or form to recognize the community history in that it was an art colony and still, in some ways, remains one.
So, Eric, you think, I'm very supportive. Do you think this would be along the lines of the preservation consideration?
Yeah, it could be part of that topic, just a subtopic.
So, we did a series of meetings. For example, we invited Dorothy Cutter, who's a 94-year-old artist who lives across the street from me. An incredible house that she's in, and incredible person. How to sort of bring that recognition while it's still vital and still available? Would that be the purpose of the subcommittee?
I don't think, I don't think we need a subcommittee, per se. I just think that as we, as it all goes forward, that the city, I'm not saying any real specific action. I just think that the city needs to have as part of its DNA this-
So, then why don't we do this? We'll just make it an agenda item for the future? Could you describe it one time for Kim?
Yeah, I just would like to have a little bit of discussion and historical, maybe overlook or over, around the historic art colony and the participants in that colony, and what it meant to the development of Morro Bay. And I think that many of the homes in Morro Bay are, some of which are at risk, greatly at risk in one case, really mean more to the community than I think the community understands. So, I just want to-
Kind of make it a little simple.
I want to hash over that.
Give us, give us one sentence. What are we, what are we hashing?
The discussion of, around the significance of Morro Bay as an art colony.
Love it.
Got it. The Planning Commission does art history. Morro Bay art history. No, he doesn't like that.
I think the art colony is a more focused topic, so I like that.
Yeah, it's more of the built environment that's remaining around that topic than it is the art history of the topic.
Okay. Other, other items?
Yes. Kim, you got to be, have your ears open on this one. The last minutes had it. I said, "We got to get this public, community public benefits memo back to the Planning Commission." Joe is a subcommittee member. We've been asking for that. The last director said it would be on our agenda soon. That's, I agree with Commissioner Roshan. We're going to wait for our new director, but it's got to be on the top of that list. I mean, you guys can do this, but that's got to be number one. We've been asking for it almost a year now.
It's been over a year.
Yes.
And the idea about how we want to address the WEUs, should that be another future agenda topic?
Yes. Same thing, in the same vein, that when we get our new director, I'd like to rehash that, what we did, and see how we can help.
And these are agenda items that we just discuss, and then we can see where to go.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Hearing nothing. Our Community Development Director is not here tonight, so hi, Michael. And do we have any idea when we're going to hear about a new appointment?
We have a person who has accepted an offer to start June 17th. So, we're about three weeks out from getting a new director. So, more to come.
Exciting. Well, thank you for that update. And would you like to say anything, Kim?
Um, not really. I think we do have agenda items for the next Planning Commission hearing. We've got a couple of conceptual reviews, one for a 10-unit hotel, and another one for mixed use. I believe it's a hotel and resi, or restaurants, hotel and restaurants. So, two conceptual review projects coming for June 4th.
On June 4th. Very good. Today is my daughter's 26th birthday, so if she's listening, I'll wish her a happy birthday. And then I'll ask for motions to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second. Thanks, everybody, very much. Good night. Good night.